Can you hear that?
There you go. All set.
I'm all ready.
One minute.
He's a senior and I think there's maybe a couple others that are helping him, assistant.
Right.
There'll be two superintendents.
Yeah.
That'll be onsite, one for site, one for inside the building.
Yep. And they work underneath.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We are the Otana School Board. This is Monday. It is the 12th of April, 5:30. We have a very, very short, regular meeting followed up by our work session. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And Eric, our attendance, we are missing Jalane Sead. She is absent tonight. So let's all rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will take a moment and approve the agenda for tonight's special meeting. We'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. First item up would be some board action. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Elstad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the board. Tonight, we have Bob Olson, who's our Director of Facilities, Security, Infrastructure. And she is going to be reviewing with you or looking at the next round of bids. If you recall, at the last regular board meeting, you were asked to approve certain scopes of the new high school project. This is the next installment of those bids that have come in. And so I would like to turn it this time over to Mr. Olson.
Thanks, Jeff. Yep, as he said, two weeks ago, we were here, I think we did about $36 million in contracts. And today, we're here looking around $45 million or just over that. Over the last two weeks, we finished up the best value interviews. And then we also did, we have some other ones that are not best value that are on there that we did not need to have done right away in the last two weeks. So this will be, this will be all of the contracts that we have for the construction of the new high school. So all of them have been, have gone through a vetting system. All of them have been verified that their prices are good and their bids are good. And we're very confident that we have an excellent group of contractors, actually throughout the whole United States, that are going to be working for us this summer, next summer, and then be ready to go the following fall. So looking for you guys to take a look at that. And I can answer any questions that you might have and...
Anything in particular you want us to know? Anything that stands out, is noteworthy?
Um, I, nothing really jumps out at us. You know, I will tell you that on all the best value bids and interviews that we have, I think we had 12 scopes. I think we only went with two of them that were not the low bid. So we're very happy with the low bid contracts. A couple of the other ones that we had were, there were some things that we were not real excited to see in there, but we felt that the second place, people that interviewed, or the second lowest bids interviewed so well that they, they jumped above the low bids in the scoring system. So I'm very, very happy with the interviews that we had and the contracts that you're going to be hoping to take some action on tonight. So we're really excited to get going.
Bob, Eric had a question for you regarding track.
Sure.
Yeah, on the track servicing, we have the base bed, the alternate, and alternate two. If you could just go into a little more detail on that.
We, oh yeah, so we had a base bid of a black track. And then the alternates were the change in the black track to a dark gray to kind of go in more with our school system colors. And then the exchange lanes being a royal blue. We decided to go with both of those because the bids came in for a pretty good price. So what we will look at is our, our artificial turf field will be green with alternating green colors every five yards, I believe. And then the track will be a dark gray and the exchange lanes will be royal blue, which will match the royal blue on the football field as well. So it's a, it's going to be a very sharp-looking track.
Green and world's solutions. What kinds of insulation are they looking at? It's obviously going to be a blown-in type thing.
I can't answer that one right, right off the top of my head. I will tell you, there will be blown-in insulation. There'll be hard insulation that goes in. And there might even be some soft insulation for the sound in between, in between classrooms. So I can't answer that one because I don't have the specs right in front of me, though. But we'll have a lot of insulation in this building.
I guess I just have a comment, Bob. I want to thank you for all that work on the best offer, bids especially. It was really exciting. Well, first of all, great to know that that process yielded good results. I mean, it confirmed that the low bids were solid and reliable, but also got us a few extra.
Mm-hmm. No, I think it was great.
Got rid of some maybe less favorable ones. And then also just what a regional, you know, really, I mean, you said nationwide, but it really looks quite regional to me when I look at the, you know, who they are and where they're located. Lot of companies, you know, within 100 miles of us.
Exactly. Most of them are cities in the metro area.
Yep.
Some that you see in New York and New Jersey or wherever else. A lot of those are your, like your sporting areas where it could be the bleachers, it could be the, on the inside bleachers, the exterior bleachers, things like that. And the track is a, is a nationwide one as well, so.
Sure. But the vast majority, anyway, I was struck by that. And so glad to see that.
Yeah, we're very happy that we actually got some Otana companies in as well. So like I said at our last meeting, this is a huge, huge project. I mean, it's, it's massive. It could be one of the bigger ones in the state that, you know, unless somebody's building a Viking stadium or something. But this is going to be a very, very large project and not everybody's big enough to handle, handle the size of a scope.
I had, okay.
I've just got one, one question. So you make note that you did not interview the stadium turf people. But yes, they're best value and you just indicated that the interview's been so well. Can I ask why?
Correct. I can, yeah, I forgot to answer that one. The difference between, there was two that, that bid on it. And the difference between the first place in the bids and the second place in the bids was so big that even if we would have interviewed the second place and they got 25 out of 25 on the interview and the first place got zero out of 25, the first place still would have beaten them by 20 points. The amount of, the dollar amount was so different and so drastic that there was no chance that they could do it. So we called them up or Kraus Anderson called them up and said, there's really no way you can get this because of the, the number of points. Do you want to waste your time and our time and everybody else's time on doing interviews? And they said, no. So that's the reason there was no interviews done.
Thank you. That helps clear that up.
And I will tell you, I did take a trip with our athletic director and our football coach up to Lakeville North to look at the sprint turf that we have, that we're going to be putting in. We did that last week just to make sure we were happy with everything and we came back excited. So it's going to be really neat to see that. And it's a very good product.
Thank you, Paul. It's a big product.
It's, it's been, it's been a busy time and we're very happy to be where we're at right now. I'll tell you that, yeah.
See, Bob, I have one more question. It's a little bit field. So if it's not the right time or you're not prepared, that's, that's fair. But when I look at all of these companies who are, who are, right, they're not in our town, obviously. Do you have any sense of how many of them, you know, will spend a fair amount of time in our community? You know, spending their dollars and staying in our hotels? Or I know the last project, we even had somebody purchase a home in the area for a while. Any sense of that? Or is that premature?
It might be premature, but I will tell you, based on the scopes and the scopes, you know, the ones that are going to be here for a long time, like our masonry and some of that stuff, a lot of them will stay during the week and then they'll go home on the weekends. Because most of them will, I'm not saying most of them, a lot of them live in the cities or they live north of the cities in some cases. I know Wade Park is one of them or somewhere up around St. Cloud. I don't know the total number. We are talking with Kraus Anderson to see if they can actually just kind of let us know, just in a ballpark figure, how many people are renting hotel rooms or if they're renting apartments, you know, they're companies like that. But Lori, I don't have those numbers. There will be a lot that are staying during the week because they, they're going to be working long, long hours. The other areas that get hit a lot are the quick trips for lunches and the, the fast food joints that are in town. They, we will have a lot of people working on our project that are going to be going out and spending money in our community. So I don't have the answers. It's a little early, but we'll, we'll find that out down the road.
I just want to add a couple of comments. And I think it's important to, you know, we remind people of the construction management versus general contractor. As we talked about, when we talked about even before the bond referendum passed, we were clear about that we wanted to take the path of construction management because it allowed us the opportunity to actually look at these bids kind of scope by scope, which helps us to keep some of that work regional, which was something I think everyone in our community wants, is we want it to make sure that we're helping our own economy within our community. You know, the other part about the best value process, though, that adds kind of layers on top of that is when you look at some of these larger scopes, they require so much phasing and timing. And there have to be times when we would say, there are need to be 40 electricians onsite or 25 electricians onsite. And they have to be here when we need you here versus, you know, if we're a company coming from a great distance. And through the best value process, you can answer those questions and ask those questions around, you know, will you be able to be on time? Will you be, understand the phasing and timing of the project? I think it's critical for the community to understand that in a project this large, the construction manager is really trying, it's a daily piece about making sure we have the right contractor onsite with the right number of workers that are here to complete the work that needs to be done. So it has to work just like a concert. It's all working together in concert to get to our final. So I appreciate the work that you've done, Bob, in this because the interviews were kind of long, long days of going through this and trying to understand. I appreciate the work you've done.
Appreciate it.
But I hope our community understands that it allows us some really opportunities to not only reinvest in our own community, but I would also add that some of those other folks that are coming in here are going to be looking for workers.
Yep.
And that might help as well with that. But it just helps us to know that we are truly getting the best high school or the best project we can get based upon the bids and the, the way it's all going to work together.
Right. And I'll add, thank you. I appreciate that, Jeff. I'll add a little bit to that. During our interviews, it's interesting that these companies, they don't interview a lot, to be real honest with you. They, a lot of times it's, they're hired by a general contractor and it's done. And they're used to a general contractor or they just do the low bids. What I heard and what stood out loud and clear for me was we have an excellent construction manager in Kraus Anderson. These, these companies like Axel Omen, you know, the big ones, the McDowell Company for HVAC Systems, they were so impressed with not just Kraus Anderson, but Wold's architectural design and the plans that, the early plans that they already have. You wouldn't know, you wouldn't believe the number of times that I heard, these plans are awesome. These things are great. It's crisp. It's clear. We know what we're doing. We know what we're bidding. There's really no, there's no questions on it. And as for the schedule, it is amazing, the scheduling that they have to do. So when one comes in, they have to be ready. Somebody comes in right behind them. They move to the next level. And the schedule that they have has been, they've been giving us thumbs up. So I'm really, really pleased to hear people that haven't been part of the, the, the design, to hear that the design went very, very well. So I got design, we have construction, we have move-in. So one-third's done. We're ready for the second third. And I hope everything goes as smooth as the first third does. So anyway, thank you.
Anybody else? Further questions or comments?
Sarah, is this roll call or is this voice call? Okay.
With that, hearing other questions or comments, would one of you be kind enough to please introduce this motion for us?
I move that the board approve the contracts we wanted for the new high school project as listed for a total of $45,411,657.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bob, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, guys. Appreciate your work.
Thanks.
Uh, that brings us to the end of this special meeting. I'll, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. He said that this meeting would start at 5:35. It's 5:43, so there's no reason for us to wait. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We'll call it 5:43. And once again, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for our work session.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Elstad. Our first report is from the ALC.
Great, thank you. As part of our ongoing kind of information sharing to make sure that board members are aware of what's going on in our district, we've asked Brenton Shavers, our Principal of the ALC, to join us tonight with, with a staff member to present on the work that's been happening in our ALC. Good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. Good evening. I forgot. They told me I could take my mask down. I'm just trying to pull this up here if I can. It's a little bit more sensitive than... Awesome. I just wanted to say thank you. It's great being here. And I did bring Captain Chaos today. It's funny. Edge Annuity, which is, you know, one of the programs we work with, they asked me to nominate somebody using a superhero name or something like that, that, that really got into their Edge Annuity software. And I chose Mark because he, Mark Wees, because he, he really jumped into this whole position. We started the year off with a sub in language arts due to our resignation, which you all are aware. And he hopped in as a sub. He really dove into the Edge Annuity piece and learned everything he could possibly learn about that program in order to assist our kids with it, which I appreciate more than anything because he could only work so many days. So the days he didn't, I actually was in that room. So it was, it was very interesting. I couldn't wait for Mark to come back. So it was, it was great and he did a great job. He, and he's still doing it. I won't say did. He's still doing a great job with that program. So they asked me to nominate someone. I chose him and his superhero name was Captain Chaos.
He's like, come and get a name, get a name. And I'm like, how about Captain Chaos? And he goes, yes.
That's it. So let's see here. Again, all of our parents, when they come in for their intake meetings with me is that I am not forcing you. The district is not forcing you to come here. We really want to make sure this is something that fits for them. Regardless, whatever their reason is for being there, we want to make sure that we are able to serve them. So it's not something that they feel like they have to be in. We do serve students from Otana, Medford, and all the surrounding communities. And we honor their graduation requirements. So for instance, I know Medford is 24 credits and we are at 28. So we honor that 24 as well. Currently, we have about 90 students that are... Currently we have about ninety students that are enrolled at the ALC. And we try our best to provide as many wraparound services as possible to support our students. Some of those services are, you know, with Fernbrook, we have Nicole who, who is with us. We also have Anisha Zuck with workforce development. And I know we work with the community pathways of Steel County as well with the food shelf and, and different things. So we really want to make sure we are providing our students with all possible needs that we can address within our building. I probably should turn this for you. And for us, it's all about relationships. We know that if we're going to get anywhere with our students, we truly have to develop a relationship with them. And Captain Chaos can attest to that. He's, he's really gotten into their, and he can tell you it was hard at the beginning because our kids do have trust issues too. And, and they really want to make sure they are getting somebody that really is invested in them. So that's one of the things we really talk about. So all of our staff are trained in trauma-inforced strategies or informed strategies. We have an opportunity with Riverland for early middle college for our students. We do a lot in our community through volunteering, not so much this year. But if you're in our buildings, you'll walk the walls and there's a ton of pictures of different activities that our students have done within the community. And staff are currently receiving training on how to incorporate blended learning into their classroom strategies. We have a book study that I'll talk about briefly, but that's, that's one of the things that we're doing. Blended learning, an approach to learning that combines traditional face-to-face classroom learning with, with other online learning experiences in which students can in part control the time, pace and place of their learning. That's, we're doing a book study right now with Catlin Tucker, or one of Catlin Tucker's books and really digging deep into those strategies. Ann Michelson was in the building today facilitating that. And one of the conversations is about what do you want as an end game? And it's truly just to give the staff members, we've spent a lot of time this year on the computer. Face, that, that face-to-face part, traditional teaching practices has kind of gone to the wayside. I really want to make sure that we are able to utilize both once we come back complete. So that's one of that, that's the blended learning approaches that we're using. And that's just a little bit, some of the main reasons why. The main one is that it gives that, the student more agency over their learning, which is, which is one of the most important things that we talk about every day is, is how can we address? What, and we talked about it today is that student choice piece is so critical. Anything that can engage them better into the classroom setting, we need to try. So that's the main thing that we're getting out of Catlin Tucker's work. Blended learning, this is where Captain Chaos will take over. But we do a lot with that, with Edge Annuity through language arts, credit recovery, night and summer school.
The thing about Edge Annuity, you know, kind of as Mr. Shaver brought up, is me jumping right into it. I mean, it was a crash course in about two weeks. It was a yearly, yearly class. So I jumped into it, videos, trying to prepare myself for the kids. And the biggest thing that I found out, and that's why I love Edge Annuity, is because it matches kids' abilities with the lessons. And it makes it, it makes them more cautious of what they're trying to learn through things that they're interested in. For instance, if they, they take a, a test before and then they can match up their strengths towards this, the learning. So each individual student is different. So what's nice about it is that I can work with a student that's specifically for them. And the other students can do their work on their own. And so how you match it up and, and work together and I, I found it's a great, great avenue for us.
It's almost like having, well, goal-setting with the students. So that's one of the big pieces with Edge Annuity. But it's almost like having each student with an individual education plan. Because it really, once they take that pre-test, it really can, you identify exactly what their weaknesses are or, or their strength areas and you can focus on both of those throughout their learning process. So it's been very helpful for us, especially knowing that we started with only language arts beginning the year with. But now with the credit recovery, the second half of the year, we started with more of a credit recovery piece with it. And the last thing, and Kim could not be with us today, so Kim Penning, she was going to be here to present this slide, but I will try to walk myself through it to the best of my capabilities. Blended learning through the multimedia room is something that we're, you've probably heard before about, maybe not by the name of multimedia, but we really tried to figure out how we can provide a space for our students to, to do some things that are out of our norm, I guess, when we're trying to do projects, project-based learning. What can we do? You might've heard the term maker space room before in some of the grants. We started looking at that and some of the things that they were doing or wanting to do, such as podcasts and things like that with our students or music. We talked about maybe having that as a multimedia room and, and actually providing that within our courses next year so that students can select that to take. And some of those pictures are just some of the projects that the students have been working on within that room this year without really being, being that identified space yet. But some of the things that will be in there would be the webcam music production. They do have the green screen for video and podcast production. You see that one of the students is using a makeshift spray booth. We actually do have a spray booth now that they can use. The heat press, three D printers and laminators, just different things that they can get in, and get in there to do and create different projects in either a single class or as, it's open up to all teachers so they can collaborate with each other for group projects as well. So that's our presentation today. Is there any questions from anybody?
So I, I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned the grant requirements and that we have twenty-eight and you honor other districts. Are there any other districts that have more than us?
Not that I've seen on our trend throughout our students yet. That may be, but not that I've seen.
Perfect. Just wondering. And the Edge Annuity, you mentioned that you've got night classes. Are those all online? Are they, are they in person or how does that work?
This year, usually they're in person. This year due with, due to COVID. I did offer the opportunity, if they wanted to take it virtually, they could. Because we were still in a blended or hybrid approach at that time. That was from, that was right up, it ended prior to spring break, the night, night courses. I think it was from February to, February eighteenth to March eighteenth or something like that, that those students could, could get in. I did hear that those, we did have the largest number of credits earned in, in, from previous years that took place this year. So it was, it was worthwhile for a lot of students, either at the ALC or from Medford or our own high school.
So just one follow-up. So now with the Edge Annuity, since the students have twenty-four seven access, are there, is there an expectation, so if they need to reach out to their teacher? Obviously our teachers are not working twenty-four seven, at least I hope they're not. Is there an expectation on how soon or how quickly the teachers respond? Again, the students are probably working, you know, they're emailing their teachers at midnight, I'm no doubt. So what is the turnaround time for responses?
I've always told our staff and Mark can attest to that. We, I think I have the best staff in the district and that's just my thoughts. But we do, we encourage our students to Google chat us, send messages. One of the things that intakes, I ask for our students' cell phone numbers just so that we can make contact with them and edit and find out where they're at when they're not attending. If they have questions, we can follow back up with them too. So it's been, it's been great. The staff have done a great job with that. We do have students that will send messages at three o'clock in the morning.
And that's, and that's part of it though, because we're, we're, we just treat it as, we do what we can to help the kids. And whenever time they have to call us or reach out to us, whatever it takes, because we understand how the world is right now with COVID and stuff like that. So we've basically given them an open door policy with regards to getting ahold of us. We understand. We get it because kids are working third shifts and all of a sudden it's five o'clock in the morning and hey, can you, can you unlock my test for me? I'm more than happy to do that because that means they're taking investments into their, into their education. So.
But to answer your question, no, we don't, we, we have, we tell the students that if you send it at an off hour, we will get back to you as soon as possible. And if it's at night, don't expect anything until the morning.
Technically.
Technically. Now, we do have teachers that are up and will respond to whatever that message is whenever. So.
Thank you very much. And I love seeing relationships. I think that's enough. I think that, again, helps them succeed.
Yeah. We know we can't get anywhere if that's, if we don't have it. So. Anything else?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Curious about open enrollment. How many students do you have from outside the Owatonna area? So you mentioned Medford. I don't know if other districts are represented in your population.
We, I know we have several from Medford. I don't have those exact numbers from, from there. I know with night school, we had six or seven also that, that attended for night school. I can find that out and get that to you.
Just curious. And then quickly, this Edge Annuity, I think I just need a demonstration of it someday because I can't quite grasp exactly what it does. I've heard about it on several occasions, but it's not crystal clear. I guess my one question about it is, is it a tool designed for the ALC environment? Or is it applicable to general education situations?
It's for, it's for either, either realm. And I think it's just, it's just a tool. It's just one tool that we have. We have Schoology as well for our students. So they do different things through different, different parts. But it's really whatever fits our students.
Sure.
Some students work well with it. You know, we had, we had a student that it's used as a credit recovery tool also. So they are able to recover credits because they have that option to test out of stuff they already know. So they've already sat through the class once and they failed. So it's like, why do you have to sit through the whole class again when you already know some of the material? Let's focus on the stuff you don't know.
I do know that I used Edge Annuity last semester when I was doing all-distance learning. I was taking a health class through Edge Annuity and it was really, it was really helpful because I would, I was able to like work at my own pace. And usually you take health sophomore year, but the way that my like courses were designed sophomore year, it just didn't fit in. And it was kind of odd to like join a classroom because it just didn't work with like scheduling and stuff. So Edge Annuity was like a nice option that my counselor provided me.
Nice. So we are using it in other buildings.
Right. So the high school employees, Edge Annuity as well, it does, it goes as low as the middle school as well. One of the things this year, because we haven't been able to, and I think Danielle's example is perfect because sometimes we've had to offer an Edge Annuity course because we just didn't have the online or distance instruction instructor, excuse me, to complete that course. As we have now, last week you learned about Owatonna online. So a lot of the courses that we're doing kind of that are grown in Owatonna will be able to facilitate by an Owatonna educator moving forward. But we use that Genuity to kind of fill in the blanks. And moving forward now, we're going to be using Edge Annuity to kind of, those one-off electives that perhaps we don't have enough students to offer a full section to will be available. And I know that, you know, Mark has done a fantastic job of really digging in and understanding because it's, Edge Annuity basically is an online platform. So it has a whole bunch of courses that are offered. Students can pick and choose. You know, it's, this whole notion of online learning has just evolved immensely from where we were even five years ago to where we are now. And of course, the last year, it's even exponentially grown. But I think it's a unique opportunity because as Brenton talked about, you have students that are now, and I think Mark, you mentioned actually was, you know, we have students that are working third shift. And this allows them an opportunity to kind of have that, you know, three hundred and sixty-five day a year, twenty-four seven kind of learning opportunity available to them. And it's really about meeting student needs and what they need. Because some of our students work because they've got a family they're trying to support or they've got other things that they're trying to do. And this is just really another offering that we can do to help them out with that. So.
And we had students that would, they'd get off, they, they would get off at eight, come to school for part of the day.
Yep.
And then they were able to throughout the evening, afternoon and evening, complete anything that they needed to do also. So it just worked out for them.
Any other questions? Can you just clarify and connect a couple of last dots for us? And I, I think what I'm hearing you say is, it's unfortunate that we had a pandemic, but if the pandemic did one thing, it really accelerated that rate of providing a technologically efficient way for education to reach out to your students.
That's a great way to put it.
And we have come to understand over time that one of the biggest challenges that the two of you face at the ALC is you'll see a kid five days in a row and then you might not see him for five weeks. And then they show up again.
I was like, five days in a row?
But so, so Edge Annuity is, is, is just yet another arrow in your quiver of being able to.
They don't, they don't get to miss much with, if they're gone because it's all self-paced. So they can just jump right back into where they, where they ended up the last, last time. So that's what's nice about it is that they can just continue to, to work towards that, that progression.
Mr. Wees, there's a bit of, bit of ownership you have in this.
Thank you. You guys have given, you guys have given me an opportunity. I want to take it full force. So I love it. I love it. I actually do. I love it.
We're glad. Anything else? Anybody? Closing comment?
I always have a couple of closing comments. First of all, Mr. Shavers, thank you. When we hired you as our ALC principal, you put relationships first. You put yourself on the map with that statement. We didn't even have to ask a question of you. And you continue to bring that every day for our students. You, you meet them where they're at and you offer them. You still have accountability, right? We want, it's that whole notion of we love you all the time and you've got to get this done. And I think that you have really masterfully done that, being a first-year administrator in our district in COVID. And I can't, I'm just taking my hat off to you with, for the work that you've done to continue to build our ALC into a really awesome and safe place for our students to study.
It's not me. It's.
And grow. And I, I get, I, I do understand that because I think it takes a team, but it also takes someone that helps to facilitate that.
Great leadership.
And, and, and Mr. Wees, I just want to make sure, you know, I, I think what Mr. Seering talked about is that, I don't know that education, I think you maybe had in the back of your head all along, but the work and, and the commitment and passion you bring for our students is just second to none.
Thank you.
And so I, I hope that we found a spot for you here in our school district because our kids are of great benefit.
Thank you.
In having you work with us.
Means a lot.
But thanks for your presentation tonight. Very proud of the work.
Thank you all.
Thanks, gentlemen. Great job. We are going to move on. Mr. Elstad is going to give us an update on this Engage Owatonna.
And I'm asking a couple of friends to join me tonight because this again is a team effort and I think they're probably coming in on cue. I have been very fortunate to work with a, a group of community individuals that are really working together to try to establish this community, the notion of community engagement. In order for us to move our community forward, it's important that we have an open venue for our community members to really engage and be transparent. Let us know what they're thinking. And so I've been working with Peng Olson and Brad Meyer on a, with, with others, obviously, on this to try to find ways to further engage our community. We found a platform. Peng was able to secure a grant for us for a couple of years of engagement using a tool called Bang the Table, which is an interesting name. But it's also a way for us to kind of get a start on what it means to truly engage our community in decision-making. So I have asked them to come tonight and talk a little bit about what, what Engage Owatonna looks like. And then furthermore, how we might be using it as a school district because there's a project we have coming up that we're going to try to gather some community input on. So I'd like to turn it over to you, if that's okay, Peng.
Oh, sure.
Or do you want to just fill in the blanks? Because I'm happy to kind of walk through it. I know you.
Do you have the presentation up here?
I will pull it up for you post haste.
It's just the next tab up there on the screen. So you can use the mouse right next to it.
Sorry.
Oh, I wasn't.
Oh, right here.
Oh, did I get it?
Sorry, I got it. You got it, Sarah? Perfect. Hey, if you want me to just talk through some of those slides and fill in the blanks, I'm happy to do that to or for.
That's what I was planning.
It's my pleasure to do that. My pleasure to do that.
You want me just to do that?
Yeah, please, if you would. Thank you.
All right. How's this work?
Here.
Other side.
Actually, what I can do, because we've got this. Let me just grab it and I can describe as we're going on.
Okay, that might be easiest.
Thank you.
Get my steps in.
Yeah, I'm getting my steps in today. That's a good thing.
Okay, so again, we're trying to solve problems in our community. And so again, we're utilizing the, the community engagement tool of Bang the Table to help us again, make some good decisions with public comment. Whoopsie.
You're, you're, yeah.
My, my trigger fingers. The one thing about community engagement is that, and I think this is the notion, the premise we offer, which is Oatana is, belongs to its community residents. And so within that, we look at how do we truly engage our community in trying to find out what they believe are our next best steps? So again, it includes public meetings, open houses, focus groups, coffee chats, polling advisory groups. We've done a number of these in the past to try to gain public sentiment. But there's new ways of gathering that information. And one of them is through utilizing a web portal, which allows us to, for people to interact in a digital way or virtual way, particularly during a pandemic. It's a safe way for us to engage our community.
So, yeah, keep going.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, just to back up a minute, what we're here really to address are two, two elements of engagement. One is the community engagement, which Jeff just mentioned. And then he had shared a slide that offered a number of different methods that are currently used. And the one we're planning to focus on specifically spending more time around is online engagement. Keep going. If you're okay, Brad and I'll just inject along the way.
You got it.
Is that how these work?
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you. And again, the purpose of this tonight is just to give the board a kind of a primer on what's happening because it does have an impact on some of the work that you're going to be engaging in as we move down the line with our, our current high school campus. So this is why they're here tonight, so. One of the things that we have learned as we've gone throughout is there are great examples of other communities that have utilized this tool. One of them happens to be in Kingston. And again, it just gives some very quick anecdotes here around the value of having this level of online engagement. We have some local ones as well. And they're coming up in just a bit. I think Edina uses this tool as well as maybe a couple of other communities in Minnesota. But again, when we look at online engagement, one of the things that idea generation, when you have a public meeting, many times it's hard to have the idea that just never was heard because someone didn't want to address it through a microphone or come up and speak publicly about it. But they might have a really super idea that they want to share in a way that they can now and really engage us. The other thing is, is it allows two-way communication. Many times in public settings like that, you get to a spot where they give you an idea and you're not able to engage that idea any further. It's like, thanks for your input and then we kind of keep moving on. This tool will allow the two-way engagement. So if I have an idea, I can share it. And if you look specifically at the project that we're working on, they can ask the superintendent, they can ask our director of facilities, they can ask our architect. Kind of say, what do you think about this idea? We can engage with them in a two-way communication then. So there, the ideas coming in, the community member feel listened to, but also that has a chance to kind of think, oh, that was a great idea, but oh yeah, I remember now that we aren't able to do that.
Right. And what we're really trying to do is harness a richer perspective to help inform problem solving and decision making.
So in order to put all this together, there had to be kind of an overarching group. And so that's how Engage Oatana was born. And again, it's a, it's a group of kind of a broad-based community group, which includes our, you know, obviously, excuse me, Peng who's working for Federated Insurance, but also is then doing public engagement with, through the Federated Insurance Corporation, as well as Brad working for the Chamber of Commerce, as well as any, many others. We have a member of the Oatana Ministerial that serves on our Engage Oatana. We have city council and, or excuse me, city administrator working there. So again, it's kind of a broad-based group that really wants to work through and truly engage our community. So our mission is to provide Oatana citizens a platform to listen, share and connect our community. So with this one, it's free of charge, which is a great thing. No one has to pay to play. They can offer up an idea. It's obviously now responsive to both desktop and, and mobile devices. We do have a twelve-month pilot initiative. And so this was about two months ago. We have a core community planning group that has, includes two school board members, two city council members, as well as two county commissioners and two members of the Oatana Public Utility Commission that come together. And this was a topic that was discussed about how do we continue to engage with one another through a platform like this as well? Because ideas sometimes aren't just exclusive to the school district. It might be an idea that have included a future partnership with one of those other entities as well. So we have a pilot initiative. The cost thus far for this program for all of the entities participating is free. It doesn't mean it will be that way forever, but it is an opportunity for us to explore, to see the value, the value before we decide to move forward if we wanted to as a school district, be a partner in investing, moving this forward for other initiatives that might be five, 10 years down the line for us.
Jeff, I think too, the fact that this is a pilot gives you all a great opportunity to give us feedback on how this thing works because we've got a lot of testimonials and we'd love to get, we'd love to hear how this, I mean, this is just going to be a great opportunity to understand a, a new way to engage members of the community.
It also allows some social media interaction. So Facebook and Instagram have redirects there. So there can be updates and things that come out that get pushed out and then it will force you back to the Engage Oatana website. Because that's where we really want the, the chatting and conversation to be is within that website. The other thing that it does offer again, and I'll just touch briefly on this is, and maybe I don't know, Peng, if there's something about moderation. One of the things that when we talk about, you know, engaging community is you also want to make sure that what's being shared is appropriate. And so Bang the Table does provide some moderation. So, you know, it takes out if there's any profanity, anything like that. And we're also trying to not single out individuals. We're really talking about ideas. And so they do, the, the moderation is such that there's never an idea that's not really shared with us. But if there's something in there that just is inappropriate for public posting, they will help to moderate that. And I think that's an important factor that this provides for us.
Yeah, the beauty of this platform is it's, it's not a new platform. It's been around for thirteen years. It's been domestic for about three, three and a half years, but most of the wrinkles have been ironed out and it is moderated. So I mean, there's, there's, there really isn't much of an opportunity for anyone to sabotage the work that's, or the communication that's presented on the, within the tool in the community.
And you have to be an authenticated user. So you have to establish an ID, you have to establish an email address that can be utilized. Because again, as you can understand, there might be people from nowhere near Oatana that would want to maybe sabotage a project or something like that. This is really just trying to recognize that if people have comments, we want to know who they are. Not because we just want to know the ideas generated from here, because they have a vested interest in our community.
Right. And those, those that want to, as Jeff mentioned, those that want to actually participate with two-way interaction do have to be registered. But there is the opportunity for individuals, and we recognize there will be individuals that maybe are a little reluctant or skeptical and what's this in front of me? You can always go online and do a drive-through. And that's part of the intent of what we've created to launch on the platform is to give just a little bit of, a few different things for people to see so that hopefully they will come back in the future to perhaps register and participate, so.
So one of the other things I think that's really important is that many times with public meetings and other venues that we've used previously to gather or to engage with the public, we generally don't always hear from all of our communities within Oatana. We believe that an online engagement tool really helps us to include more voices and more perspectives. We have, you know, folks in the, in our East African segment of Oatana, our Somali population, maybe Hispanic or Latinx population, as well as many other ethnicities and cultures that would have an opportunity to do this. And then also demonstrate some ownership in the community because there's, there's certainly community members ask for it. And then we're able to engage with them and really walk an idea forward from its birth, maybe on an ideation page, all the way through the actual opening of, of what we're doing. And that transparency builds trust. And I think that's important as public entities, whether it's a school district or the city council or city or county. It's an effort for us to always try to keep the community recognizing that they can trust what we're doing. Sometimes decisions are made that maybe don't not always, aren't always agreed upon by everyone. But we are going to be real clear about what we're doing or at least collecting ideas so that we're vetting all of those before we get to a spot where we're just making decisions arbitrarily. This is from Edina. I mentioned that before. It just really up, opens up dialogue and perspective. It also allows the convenience of jumping online because sometimes seven o'clock on a Thursday night is not available to you. You can do it at three o'clock in the morning if you want to get on and engage. We just got done hearing a presentation from our ALC about that access. And we just recognize that that's something we have to engage with now is making sure that everyone has a time that's convenient for them to acknowledge and access. And then again, we talk a little bit about the platform that we're using. This happens to be the front page. We haven't had, we've had, we're looking for a soft launch coming up here. It's happened today, we kind of soft launched it, Peng, or is it coming up?
I think you said you wanted to use the fifteenth of April.
The fifteenth of April, pardon me. So in a few days here, coming up on Thursday, it'll be a soft launch. One of the things I was going to try to direct traffic to if we could tonight was to show you kind of what our high school page looks like. And so I'm wondering if, is that, is that, is that somewhere? Did you put, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to it. You're going too fast.
I went too fast, missed a couple pieces, my fault. I got to the page I was looking for though. So again, one of the things that we look at is this IAP two is something we looked at for public participation and kind of what levels we're looking. Sometimes it's information only. Sometimes we're looking to consult. So what we're doing is it's kind of through the process of decision-making. Sometimes a consult is we're asking you for input, but we're still going to have to make a decision with it. But it's critical that we're clear about what the purpose of our communication is. We will sometimes want to involve the community in the decision-making process. So it's very democratic in nature than where the community is really involved in, in trying to decide every kind of leg of a project. We may collaborate, but furthermore, the last part you want to do is empower community members to feel like there's ownership in the projects that we're moving forward. And this doesn't have to do with just the, I mean, the streetscape project is on there. We've got a number of other civic projects that are here. Again, just to really give the community a bird's eye view, but also participate in the process.
If I could just say one thing about this, that this, I don't know if you, I can't see it very well, but this diagram or this table here is really guide, the fundamentals are what are guiding the engagement effort for each type of project. So as a project is brought forth from a, a group or an individual or consortium of some sort, we will be asking them where they fall in this spectrum in terms of community engagement to help put together what is the purpose of this project and to help guide the selection of the appropriate tools and other, we call them widgets, but other elements that help share some additional information about the project itself. But this is really foundational to the work. It, it's kind of a promise to the public in terms of public participation, you know, saying, here's what, here's, here's our goal and here's what we're promising you in terms of transparency and what we're planning to share based on the input and engagement you offer.
Could I just ask a question on that? I would imagine, Peng, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I could envision projects moving from one to another. In other words, left to right, right? You start out on one or, or.
You mean evolving over time? Absolutely. And they can, we can continue, we continue that evolve, that evolution by providing updates to the project, or we can start a whole new project in and of itself.
So this is kind of small to see. And of course, at some point here in the next, within the next week, you'll be able to go on yourself and see it. But this is one of the projects, which is writing the next chapter about our current OHS campus. If you remember back in 2019 when we passed the bond referendum, question two really referenced how to repurpose or what ideas we should do to be repurposing our current high school campus. We want to engage our community in that discussion on the very front end. And so the process and what you will see when you go on to the site is there's very clearly we have set up who's going to be responding to some of the questions. So you can see I'm up there. Bob Olson is up there as well as Paul Aplikowski, our lead architect. We'll be the ones responding to those inquiries and questions that come in. But the other, the biggest part of our first phase is really just ideation. We want people to create ideas. And the long-term vision for this process walks us from ideation, which then will come back to the same people that are engaged in the ideation and really ask for their participation in some surveying around, what do you think are the best ideas that came forward? The picture here ends with a community task force probably aligned somewhere next, early next fall to take a look at what were the ten best ideas? And a ten is an arbitrary number, but let's say it's ten. We want to engage the ten best ideas so that a lot of the legwork around gathering ideas has already been done. And in a way that was very efficient so that the report can be produced for the community task force. They can take those, again, ten ideas and start to look at how might we incorporate that on our current campus? Now that leads itself into design and architecture of it. And sometimes the parameters that get a little smaller because there is a finite amount of dollars. We don't have an infinite wallet for this project. So we have eight million dollars and that's what we'll be spending. But again, there could be an idea that we haven't ideated yet that comes from our community. Or there might be an idea that comes forward about a potential partnership in our community that we need to engage further. Because let's say we hear from our community that there's, people are really interested in, in a community center. We've heard that before. And it's no surprise to anyone that that may come out of this. Well, then what does that mean for us as a school district? Maybe we engage with someone to talk through, well, what does that look like? And how might we financially partner to do something like that? Or maybe there are other ideas, like I said, that we haven't even thought of yet. And so I think it's a great way for us to kind of, again, for right now, there's no cost to have that engagement for us to just ideate these projects, to have people get a good flair. And when we first started working together, this was one of the projects we thought we could launch because we need to make sure we have public participation very present on the front end of this. And then as we go further, it gets further and further refined to a point though, where some of those ideas that came out are actually ideated and now they've become a reality for us that we're going to move forward with.
We also wanted to make sure that we selected a project that would drive community members to want to register because it would be a project that would be of great interest to community members. And, and you know, our overarching objective is really to build this registered participant database so that we can continue to bring more projects forward, more engagement opportunities, building on that sense of connectedness, that sense of belonging, that inclusivity piece that Jeff referenced earlier.
As this moves forward, as Peng mentioned, there are different widgets you can add, which is like FAQs. You can add things that are important to know. As we move forward and start to gather more information about this project and kind of what ideas are coming in, we can add more widgets that will provide more and more information for people. We've really left this as sort of a blank slate right now. We want to make sure that the community knows that every idea is encouraged. And then as we go further, there may be an idea that's put out there that we say, ooh, we can't afford that. But then there's just a really honest response back to that particular patron to say, thank you for the idea, but within the financial parameters we were given, that will not be something we can accomplish. But perhaps then they come back and say, well, what about this part of it? Well, there we go. Now we started a new conversation that we can engage with, so.
Yeah. And, and I also want to point out, and I, I don't know if you referenced this earlier, Jeff, what community engagement means and what it doesn't mean. And it doesn't mean that it replaces the decision-making, the authority.
Right.
That is duly placed upon you as elected officials.
Right.
It's, go ahead.
That's a good, that's a good point. I think it's, you know, and I think that resides with all of the public entities. No one is replacing the decision that a school board is going to make for the school district. However, I think all of us would agree around here and the board that I've been, had the pleasure of working with is interested in public input because informed decisions are the best decision that you can make. And so again, within that and within the scope, it just allows us another opportunity to gather those informed pieces that help when we bring a product for you that you can consider for approval, that you know that it's been ideated through the community and they've had a chance to kind of weigh in on it. There are other projects that are on here. This happens to be the North Cedar Streetscape. And I know Brad has been working on this as one of the leads. You probably have seen some things come out in the local press about this. But again, just another opportunity to kind of, this process is, this is a little further along because the ideation of things kind of came earlier. Now they're at a spot where they're really getting to this point about prioritizing and things like that. And I don't know, Brad, you want to make any comment about that particular process or?
Well, it's, it's very different than the school project because it is moving in the next couple of months. So we struggled with it to try to figure out what we wanted feedback on, but I think we're going to learn a lot from this that hopefully you'll be able to use as well within years because things are moving. We'll say, look, at this part of the project, this is the feedback we got and things like that. So it, it was, it was probably worked really well because of that and we'll kind of see how it, see how it plays out.
Yeah.
I wish we had it. I wish we had this up six months. I wish we had it, I wish we had this up six months ago for that project.
Exactly. Um, this is another project that we're working on. This happens to be just the story, it's called the stories we share.
Yeah, I did. Can I just have a quick question?
Please, I'm sorry.
That's, it's all good. So I was perusing my emails and I got something from the city and I followed all the links and ended, ended up watching the video on the cityscape project. Was that located on this tool in it or is that how you're using it or we will be?
Yeah, it'll be on there.
It's embedded. We, we pulled, getting to what Jeff, or maybe it was you who said it earlier, you know, we wish six months ago, things would have maybe been a little different, but that's okay. We're starting from where we are in the process. And in terms of that spectrum you saw earlier.
Yeah.
We're informing. That's where the focus is on this particular project consultation. We're informing. And if there are opportunities to engage, we will. But the ISG information that you're referring to, there are elements of that from the cities page, which is connected to ISG that we are embedding into this as we begin to drive registration with more participants. We felt that this would be a good platform to.
Sure.
Reshare some of that information.
So it's not yet published on, on this site, but?
No.
Right, right.
So to that end, I think it's important, we talk about, if we go back to our specific project that's pertinent to us. If you look at kind of that reflexive sort of way of driving people to and from websites. And so within the Engage Oatana website, there will be a way for them to go right back to the Oatana Public Schools website. But vice versa, we want to drive them from if they're interested in seeing more about that project that we drive to the Engage Oatana site. So there's a nice reflective, reflexive sort of way of doing business there. If I just briefly can comment on this one, this is more of a, a human piece, which is the stories we share. This is coming from the, oh man.
Alliance?
Thank you, Alliance for Greater Equity. Thank you. Which is kind of a new grassroots, grassroots, grassroots group that has come up to really identify racial and ethnic equity within our community. And so sometimes it's really just about sharing stories of the different people that live in our community. And so this happens to capture a more of a human element. And so what you're going to see within this particular segment are different videos that are going to be captured about community members that had different experiences coming through and, and kind of how, and I know the first couple, I think, or the first one actually has, has been, has work they're working on right now to.
Yeah, we're working on embedding a video, but we're inviting community members to share their own stories. Where they're from, you know, we all come from different places and they can do it through video, you know, you just pick this up and do your own video anymore nowadays. Or you can certainly write a narrative on there. Again, you have to register to do this. And then we'll also invite them to kind of place a pin on a map to tell us a little bit about, you know, where, where did your family, where did you come from specifically? So people can see, you know, the collective, the collective background of what reflects our community as a whole. So there's some really neat things that we can do. And so we, like I said, we were intentional with our project selection. Some people will just cruise on through and they're curious. Others will, hey, I'm ready to engage and participate in that high school question that's being asked. Beyond that, tell us your ideas. I know Jeff's offering the opportunity to ask the superintendent, are you curious to know something? And he plans to respond to those questions in a transparent way.
This is just a different sort of illustration of kind of the process we go through in different levels. And again, as Ping indicated, some projects are more about, this is just an, we're informing you of something which is low level of input all the way up to, we want to really engage and empower people in our community to have a say in the future projects that we might be working on. So again, another anecdote here, this is from the city of Superior, Colorado, talking about it exposes potential landmines sometimes that you get into when you're heading into a, a large project. So just a couple of anecdotes there. The task force that's involved with this is just a community partner group that we have put together. We have really been working on, I want to give credit, a lot of credit to Ping. She's really been kind of the one, the leader with this and helping us kind of be the architect of, of what this community engagement looks like. But it's really about content development. You wouldn't believe all the pieces I have to come into and there's, there's legal pieces within it. There's all sorts of work that the group has been, been part of. But I want to just thank both Brad and, and Ping too for being part of this because it's just another way for us to continue to build trust with our community. So our next steps, as was mentioned, we're going to do some promoting. You're kind of the first entity that's hearing about this in this way. There'll be some cross promoting. We're going to do a soft launch, as Ping mentioned, this Thursday, April 15th. It'll be a project in motion. So there'll be constant content development happening with this as well as just really evaluating, coming back to you as a school board and saying, hey, how do you think this process worked? What did we gain from it? Because at some point we are going to have to decide, is this something we want to financially partner with our other civic entities to move forward? Once we've studied it and kind of evaluated the value of course.
Yeah, there, there are things that we don't know yet. We recognize that there are systems, processes, overall structure, resource needs to support the capacity and the future administration of this platform. And those are elements that we have to continue to work on to figure out, you know, the governance of this. Because right now we have a current task force working on this, you know, comprised of a community partnership. But our objective is to transition that task force into one that's more permanent. Oftentimes what you might see with a, let's say a nonprofit board or what have you, recognizing that we want a broad representation from the community as a whole to help guide the governance of this platform because it's, it's for the community, so.
So again, this is kind of getting close to the end of the presentation, but really what we need right now, and again, I can't be more excited because as someone, and, and I think our board tries over and over again to try to gather public input. That's an important part of our process to make sure we're being transparent because this school district is paid for by the people that reside here. And so it's important that we remember that, that engagement is part of our obligation. All of you were elected as board members and you serve as a board that were, as a servant, as a constituent that was elected. And I think I'm very excited about the potential that this tool has for us to really continue to inform our school board in making decisions and really keeping the public informed along the way so that people go, I don't, I haven't heard much about that. Well, let me tell you where you can find that information, really sending them and doing that kind of promotion with itself.
Yeah, the adoption of this platform is really critical and getting it right as we roll this out in the community is very critical. We've learned from past experience, you may have good intentions to get something rolled out and then you may run into some barriers. You take a couple of steps back, you re-invent, redo and, and start again. But you know, we, we really tried to go slow before we go fast. So building this out and getting it in front of you as, you know, just as a dry run, opening it up for some questions, your feedback is really going to help shape and inform what, what needs to happen next because we recognize that we will have about at least 15 to 20 audience groups to get in front of. And we don't have time to wait because we want to get this out this week. So there are some additional groups that we need to get in front of. So any feedback or questions that you have are more than welcome. And we, we want you on the 15th to get in to the platform, get registered if you will. You know, use it, share it with others, you know, talk to others about it. We're trying to drive engagement.
So just to kind of recap, and again, I'm being very specific about our project and kind of the value that as a school board you will find. So along the way, as we start to gather more and more ideas, we'll be working through our facilities committee who then report to the board as a whole to kind of let you know what ideas have come in, what ideas kind of are circulating, what things we're researching further because boy, it's got a lot of merit and maybe we ought to think about moving this idea forward. I just think kind of keeping the board informed all the way along. And then at some point along the way, when we reach certain junctures of this particular project, I think it would be important to come back and evaluate and get your input as a board member, maybe in a more formal way to say, what do you think about this? What, what do you like about what you're seeing so far? So what I would tell you to do is the first thing is you got to probably just sit and drive for a while. I would ask you on April 15th, get out to engageoatana.com, take a look at it, see what you think. You can start kind of perusing around the different projects and just kind of help us out. I think that first sort of perusal of it will give you an idea as to what, as a board member, what do you think maybe should be added to it? Because again, we, we put a little as, or less is more right now, I'll say that because the less information we have on there right now, because otherwise we start to kind of almost pigeonhole some things. And so we're just trying to kind of see where we're at. So that's where I would leave it. And I know there are probably some other questions, so at this time I'd like to open up for questions.
Of course. Um, so I, I have a few questions actually. So other than obviously the school and it's a couple that you showed, how are projects identified that actually go on here? Is there some place for the public to suggest projects to go on there or maybe potential businesses that are looking to join in their community that want feedback before they even think about it?
Yeah, yeah. So as mentioned, we're starting with three projects. And we will have, each tile represents a project and we will have some other tiles presented to the public as well. One will be more of a descriptive tile, talking about the platform, what it represents. Another one will be about, do you have a project idea to submit? And then we will gather, there are six fields where you can input into those fields, some specific information reflective of criteria that we'd be looking for to evaluate to determine is this worthy of consideration for a platform like this for the community as a whole? Now ultimately, our objective as the current task force isn't to be the decision maker, but for now it is until we're able to transition to that newer structure that gets developed here in the hopefully near future.
And it'll be interconnected with other chamber, economic development, all those things so we can, to, to your point on a future businesses or people just looking at, what's this community all about, that kind of thing? It'll be an option there too.
Um, and my other question actually is to you, Jeff. So again, you know, I'm all about social media. So are you going to make a video of, you know, what people could expect to see and on here so that we can maybe share it on Facebook and get people to?
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. And I think like you say, we're in the process and so something like that, just gathering some of the ways that we can further engage people. You know, what we're trying to do is we can, I think we're going to use social media right now to really be a driver back to the engage.com website because that's where they can truly find the tools to engage deeper. But I think creating a video maybe of a how-to, even a promotional. I mean, before I, I know that there were times that, in fact, I'm thinking about Brad specifically, there was a time you and I did a promotional for the Chamber of Commerce about an event that was upcoming that we put out on social media. I can see something like that happening, but that's a great idea. Thank you.
We can share it.
For sure, yeah.
Well, I think that's a key point because right now what's going to happen is we've got this great website that we know is going to be awesome, but we got to get people on it to use it and that'll be the next big push. It's a great idea, yeah.
Um, would students be able to use this as well? Absolutely. And interestingly, early on, when we asked folks to get registered, we do ask for a couple of pieces of demographic, or demo, yeah, demographic data. Specifically, we want to know what decade, we do want to know what decade you were born because on the backend, that's going to help us understand the type of engagement and the responses that we get and where they're coming from and what's, you know, informing that problem we're trying to solve or that idea that someone's put forward that, you know, people are glomping on, you know? You know, is it a bunch of 70-year-olds that are attracted to this or is it a bunch of, you know, younger people that are attracted to it? So we'll ask about that and we'll also be asking about, do you live here? Do you work here? Do you own property here? Check all that apply, some of those features, so.
I, having been through several different school bond and levy issues, would be quick to offer my huge appreciation for the brilliance of this simply because how many times have we held public opportunities for people to come and weigh in and tell us how they feel about certain things? And you know darned well, I mean, being a person that sits in the back of the room and watches body language and watches how people are asking questions, so very often two or three people dominate the entire thing. Very, very often you, it's a community-wide invite and seven people show up. And, and if you have presumably a phone or a computer network, you have an opportunity to weigh in with this. Two questions for you. Is there a certain amount of anonymity? Like once I get registered and I say, I think the existing high school should be used for X. Is that presented without my information attached to it?
It can be, absolutely. When you register, you will give yourself a screen name. And you will also put in your email address and it is the email address that will bang the table, the, the company that we're working with. They, they verify that email address that it's legitimate. So you can put your name in as Mark Sebring for that screen name that would appear or you can create one that you don't need to tell us right now.
Yeah. But I mean, certainly there, and I'm harkening back to even in the, the public opportunity for people to share their thoughts, very often, you know, once you get to that meeting, if you feel that the, the momentum swinging in a different direction, sometimes you just, you see people just sort of just back down and they think, no, I'm not going to bring it up. Whereas with, with that anonymity and without it being in a public setting, you really have a great opportunity to.
Yes.
Express how you feel. My last question, and it's real quick, but Ping, you had just mentioned that there's like 14 groups you need to get out to. So are we like one of the groups, are, are you presenting this to various groups like us in an attempt to raise the visibility of?
Yes, absolutely. To, again, as I mentioned earlier, to help really drive traffic, you know, we're going to ask people to share this on their social media page, to restate it, to embed it in their newsletters. Because at the end of the day, we, we're trying to get the community as a whole to come together to help promote this platform because we really wanted to stick around, wanted to stay and become a mainstay in the community. So we have one common repository as a community to go to, to see what's happening. It's not necessarily, I think some, some folks have maybe misinterpreted that, you know, oh, it's a great way to market what I'm working on or to share, you know, my job or the service that I offer. That's not the intent of this platform at all, so.
See, I have a couple of questions that are maybe bring it back to the, the board. So I really appreciate your comment, Mark, about the anonymity function. And I mean, personally, I'll have to ponder that to sort out, you know, what makes sense? Will, will it change from project to project? And to bring it back to sort of what's right in front of us, I'm not sure that we have an answer tonight, but I, I don't know if others have considered this. So, so Jeff or others, you know, do you encourage board members to remain virtually silent on this particular project related to the high school? And be a listener and observer and, or do I put, you know, Lori Weisenberger out there as my ID and then throw my thought, you know, it seems like that would be stifling and, and doesn't seem like that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, you know, and I don't know, we have a specific example. I can only to, you know, the, what I have reviewed, when if you look at like the city of, uh, city of Oatana, city of Edina that's been using this, you don't see a lot of city council members sort of chiming in with it because there is sort of a stifling factor to it. Because if you, if you, and you are a decision maker for the district, that when you're, when you're making comment and kind of going back and forth with somebody, perhaps you've already chased the idea away because you're offering where your decision might land on it. So I think what is for me is more of just an observer and a listener. The, the way that we're framing it is that if the, as you saw on the particular page we have, there are three levels of contact that people can ask a question. So they can ask a question and we can give them back a very factual, some of, and that's why Paul Aplikowski from Wold is included, because sometimes there's an architectural question that's asked and we don't know the answer to, but he can be the one to respond using his skill and advice to do so. If there's something within the financial parameters, you know, that can be something that I can respond to or Bob could respond to because it really helps us sort of direct traffic so that we're not chasing an idea away, but we're helping to answer questions. So we also aren't misleading people into what we can and can't do with a particular project like this. But I think your question is a good one. As a board member, I think it's more just to listen and observe because you will get the opportunity in the very end to come in and decide and be the weighing factor on which direction we eventually go. But on the front end and the But on the front end and the whole ideation and just sort of even the engagement process, it's more just like you wouldn't a public meeting. You're listening and observing as, you know, Mark indicated as well, so.
You said there were a couple of things.
Um, well, I was, it was kind of both. That anonymity question, um, yeah. I guess maybe the other follow-up is again, just thinking specifically on our project and how this might roll out. So you've already mentioned it, right? The community center. So, you know, representatives from the city, I don't know, probably not the chamber so much. But you can envision a need, I could envision a need to hear from, in that context to some degree. Other public officials or representatives of other resources in our town. How does that get captured? Or if they're not one of the three responders, are, are there formal ways to kind of say, hey, we're gonna, you know, invite?
Well, I think so. And I, and I don't know so much of, what I believe the step in there is that it informs us that that's an idea that's weighing on people. So that there, I mean, and let's say it's, it's one or two people that may comment on that. Well, that's, that's one thing, but if you have twenty-five, thirty, fifty, a hundred people that are making that same comment, now it's enough of a trend. Where now I think our, we have to engage the city or another partner and say, okay, here's what we're hearing through our ideation tool. Let's talk about this because if this is something that's on people's minds, we ought to start thinking about what avenues can we approach this? Sometimes the avenue will have to be, whoa, we just don't have the financial resources to accomplish that. Or the answer might be, have we also talked about a private partnership? Is there somebody out there, a private entity that's willing to come forward and say, we'd love to partner with you on that? Because now they can bring an additional financial resource. So I, I think there's a level of engagement there where it allows us to at least start asking the questions. So that we can engage, like I, I look at, you know, I'm thinking about Brad engaging the chamber in something. So there's businesses in our community that have a vested interest. Now I can talk with Brad about the possibility of that partnership moving forward. So there is a, there is an opportunity to do that, but I don't know that it would be on the front end of just the ideation part. Because it might, um, it might stifle an idea, but it also might encourage a trend to develop. Because as I mentioned, the second part of this, and the beautiful thing, I like it, is that let's say that Eric puts an idea on there. And all of a sudden people, cause people can see the idea that his screen name has shared. And let's say that three hundred people like that, just like you can on Facebook and you can on Instagram and you can on Twitter, you can heart it, you can like it. And all of a sudden, now I see the three hundred people have liked that idea. I'm looking at this now going, oh, that's something that really has people's attention. We should probably look into what the other uh, inner workings of that might be if we need to push that forward to a deeper level.
Daniela, looks like you still have something.
I, you know, I, I just wanna say this, and I think Daniela, you brought up a great point. Because, you know, sometimes the adults in the community, you know, we want students to engage with this. And I think Peng was right on target. We wanna know, there might be a demographic question on there, but it's not, we wanna know what your ideas are too. Because quite honestly, our work is to provide, provide a better community for people like yourself and our students, the tomorrows, the future. Because some of those projects we might be working on now, we may never see them to fruition. But it is something that if we kind of keep pushing forward, and that's the beauty of having all of our community, including our students engaged in this. Because we wanna hear your voices too. So I think that's a great point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Is there an age, I mean, because it's being run by, what is it, Bang the?
Bang the Table?
Bang the Table, um, to register, is there an age requirement? Okay.
But that, like I said, the email address is reviewed.
Has to be legitimate, yeah.
All right.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time, yeah. Appreciate it.
Just give us a holler if you have any questions or want more detail or, and don't forget to get logged on later this week.
The former tax day, it's not anymore. Thanks for the service. Thank you guys.
Great, thanks again.
Thanks again. Can I?
As we move on, um, well, as Mr. Elstad gets up and walks away.
If you just go to the moderator, so Amanda can.
I'll invite Amanda in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Another budget update tonight. Amanda, good evening. Welcome. How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
All right. Well, thanks for having me here today. I wanted to uh, meet with you guys to give a brief update as to where we're at with our budget process for um, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, early last week, I had an opportunity to meet with our board finance committee members and go through this information. And now we're just bringing it to the full board so that everyone knows where we're at. Um, as you recall, we showed this at our final budget. Um, so basically this is our fund balance forecast as we move forward. So as we take a look at um, twenty-one, twenty-two there, we have our two million dollars of budget cut target at this point. Um, and so you can see that we slightly raise our unassigned, or we're planning to slightly raise our unassigned fund balance at the end of twenty-one, twenty-two. So we can build that up a little bit to then obviously come down and we start spending down our fund balance quickly. As you can see out into twenty-three, twenty-four there, we're at a four point eight nine percent fund balance. Obviously, if we don't have any further revenue come in and we don't make any further budget reduction. So as you can see, uh, making those reductions upfront like we have in nineteen, twenty and twenty and twenty-one. And then now, making our two million dollar target now is very important to help us build that up as we move forward. To create that financial stability that we need moving forward. So as we take a look at our staffing process, when we take a look at this budget reduction target of the two million dollars. When we start our staffing processes early in January, we're really looking to project what our enrollment's gonna be for the next school year. And as I've mentioned before in a couple of my presentations, enrollment for next year is going to be a little bit more difficult to forecast as we move forward. Because we know we had kids that moved from homeschool or from the regular public school to homeschool this year. And so as we anticipate those, um, hopefully most of those students coming back, we're anticipating fifty percent of those kids that left to be coming back in. And we're looking at our staffing targets for this year and our students coming back in. So as we're looking at reductions, um, at the elementary, middle school and high school level, we're looking at a reduction of four point um, oh FTE at the elementary. Three at the middle school and three and a half, three and a half at the high school. And I'll walk through kind of what those class size targets look like after those reductions are made as we move forward. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at a five percent reduction in supply budgets district wide. And we're also looking, we constantly look for this when we're looking at budget reductions is to look for resources that we currently have, whether or don't have. When we get new grants and things like that, to be able to utilize those restricted resources to be able to fund some of our staff. So we're gonna be funding one point oh FTE next year out of some existing restricted funds, Title IV and staff development. So that'll essentially come out of the general fund and then move into these restricted funds. So that'll free up some room in the general fund. And then again, as we talked about earlier in the presentation when Bob was talking about the construction manager piece of this. So when we look at the bond project coming up, we are going to be planning to um, budget one point five FTE into the bond for the management of the new high school project. And that's really from a construction and a financial management standpoint. Because as we mentioned earlier, with the construction management piece, we have a lot more control. We also have a lot more pieces that come with that. And as we talked at the finance committee meeting, with a construction manager type project. Um, we don't just necessarily, we don't write a check to the general contractor and then they pay the subcontractor. We pay all of the vendors and we have all of the contracts that we're dealing with. And so all of those pieces get rolled up together and retracting those assets. So it does create a lot more work on the financial side. Which is good because like I said, we get a little bit more control over that and know who we're paying, when we're paying them and, and it's a lot easier to track that way too. Um, so really all in all, um, thirteen FTEs in total on this sheet as you're seeing. Some being obviously moved into restricted funds and then others being reduced based on our enrollment targets. So as we take a look at our elementary class size targets, you can see on the left there, it's the board target um, for each different grade level there. And after reductions, you can see on the right side, you can see that we're very in line with where we are from a, from a board target perspective. The only area that we have a possible inch up is going to be in the third grade area where we go from our normal target of twenty-three to now we're seeing twenty-five. And just know as we move forward with our Oatana online, these numbers may change. Because we may have kids that are already existing in our system that do decide to do the online. Um, as it stands today, I think we have twenty-five or twenty-six kids that are already currently existing in our system that are wanting to go to Oatana online. So as we continue to move through the registration process, we may see these targets fall right back into line where we expected. And, and really we are in line with where our board targets are except for that third grade level at this point. So, as we take a look at the big nine, um, I thought this was interesting to kind of do a comparison as to where we're at as far as the big nine. So when we look at all the schools over on the right um, hand column, there is the average. So as you can see, we've been very fortunate in our district to be able to manage um, our financial resources as best we possibly can. But also to provide a, a really a great class size for, for, as you can see there, the average for kindergarten is twenty-two for the big nine and we're at nineteen right now. So we've really been able to afford to keep those class sizes low, which obviously benefits our students in the long run. So, we've been fortunate and we, and we continue to manage our resources effectively for that reason. So we can keep class sizes as low as we possibly can. As we take a look at our middle school, um, with the reduction of three point oh FTE here. Um, we can see that the student to staffing ratio is really very comparable to where it was last year. Cause we are gonna see a little bit of a decline in enrollment. So we're gonna be at twenty-two point oh five for our staffing ratio there versus twenty-two point oh three from the prior year. And the high school, you can see that we're gonna go up just slightly, um, in our staffing ratio here. So we're gonna be looking at twenty-five point one three student to staffing ratio versus twenty-three point one five where we were from, from last year. And then ALC, we're planning to stay very consistent there, so not much change there at all. So as we move forward, part of the other piece of this prod, uh, a piece of this puzzle, excuse me, as we're moving forward to plan financially. Is we know we're gonna have S R two and S R three, which is are gonna be our federal funding round two and round three fundings that are coming now. Those allocations will be released soon from M D E, so we'll hopefully have a better idea of how that's going to play into our financial um, plan as we move forward. But what we do know of the funds right now is that S R two is going to have a portion of it, around ten percent of it is going to be set aside for summer school programming. Summer school, aged care and staffing, um, as we look at expanding those services to create some more opportunities for kids this summer. Um, as we come off of COVID here. And then in S R three, we know twenty percent of those funds are gonna be reserved um, for addressing the lost learning time. Again, implementing interventions for summer learning, after school and extended care or extended programs for students. And then addressing students' social and emotional needs. Um, and as we look at these funds, S R two funds are available through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And S R three funds are gonna be available through two thousand, or September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. Um, and the way this state's wanting us to use is they want us to use round one first, round two and then round three. So as we manage that forward, um, and plan forward, once we get the allocations, we'll obviously be able to hopefully meet as a board finance committee again. And plan forward as a, an entire board, how we want to be able to utilize those funds to really help hopefully stabilize us financially. And obviously, as we get out the end of the legislative session here, hopefully knowing more about what the state's going to give us for the next biennium will be helpful too as we plan forward. So, there are still a lot of pieces, uh, moving pieces as we, like I said, as we do the Oatana online and we're getting registrations in for that. But for now, um, looking at the enrollment pieces, um, the recommendations for the FTEs, um, are what I mentioned earlier as, as those reductions, so. Does anyone have any questions or any comments?
Amanda, do we know, it's early, cause usually we don't know this till later like in May, but.
Yep.
Are there any presumed retirements coming up to help us out?
Yeah, good question. I was gonna, I was gonna mention that and I forgot too. So a lot of the reductions that we're able to, we're gonna be able to make are gonna be through attrition, which will be from retirements, especially at the elementary level. Um, and then we've had some more retirements come in here in the last month or so. So we see a lot of this reduction being able to be done through attrition where we're not having to do, you know, leaves of absence and things like that. So, yes, that's a good question.
I think one thing I'd like to add to that, though, I think it's important to mention, even though we see staffing ratios that we've been able to really monitor and keep with, keep in check. Uh, we've made that a priority. The school board has made that a very clear priority, that, that class sized targets have been important. I think our community sees that as well. Um, what I would share with you though is the reductions that we've made have put us in a spot where we do not have one ounce of wiggle room at now. And so we're at a point where uh, moving forward, we're going to have to look at, um, what is our financial forecasting? But again, uh, last year, you know, we asked two questions. Uh, the first was to just kind of uh, renew our current levy, which was great. Because the financial forecast you saw tonight would have looked much different, um, had that not been the case. But we also recognize, as you can see, forecasting for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are going to be in a position where we're going to have to ask our community again to uh, to take a look at uh, some additional operating revenue as we move forward. Because we wanna continue to honor the requests of our community to keep class sizes in check. But we also know that moving forward, the cost of doing business, uh, and goods and services are gonna continue to rise. So, uh, we'll have to bring those back up, but I wanna just commend Amanda. She's done a wonderful job. Uh, we've also tried to make the reductions and when you look at thirteen and a half FTEs across the district, in a district our size, that's a big number. We've had some retirements which have helped accomplish that. As a board, you worked, you approved a, an unrequested leave of absence for one employee. We may have an additional one or two coming up depending upon us uh, the, moving forward. But really, we've been able to manage it from a way, um, of allowing people to retire but not replacing. That's a dangerous game that can be played because if you don't look at replacing those folks in the future, you start to limit opportunities for students. And I think that's the end game for us. So again, all in all, the financial picture and Amanda and her team have really worked well to help us manage it. However, we're gonna reach a point where we're gonna have to look at what that next step is, because that's gonna be critical for our district.
Yep, absolutely. And as I showed in that first slide, I mean, the fund balance steps down very quickly if you don't make any further reductions and, and make choices as we move forward. So, yep.
Any further?
Maybe just one quick one. Um, Amanda, remind me, so these S R funds, um, when do you expect? What's the timing on when we'll know more on those? Is that clear?
S R two will know very soon. Um, S R three, the legislators, legislature's still working on figuring out what those funds are gonna be used for. What we're really hopeful, um, with both of these funding sources is that it's going to be very flexible. And it's going to allow us to be able to use these funds to help support our current operations, not just adding new things on. Because that doesn't help us as we move forward. If we're just adding new things and it's one-time money and then that goes away, then we have to get rid of that stuff. So we're hoping that that'll help us to help, you know, bridge the gap as we move through for the financial stability piece, so.
So, does this budget reflect any new hires that are necessary for this, for the online schooling?
Uh, no. So we don't, we don't have any existing budget right now for the online schooling. We do have staffing plans in place, um, for, at the elementary level we have right now, and we don't know cause the enrollment's not there. But we do have a couple of positions that we have out there that we'll be able to work within our current existing budget to help move to online learning. And then if we need more from there, we'll have to figure that piece out. Um, from the high school secondary level, I know we have some plans with our ALC staffing to have some blocks of time within their day to be able to support the online learning in each of the different content areas. So, we do have plans in place to use our existing resources just because we are very limited in what we have moving forward. Um, and we're hopeful to that if we get additional um, enrollments, like if we get kids that are enrolling from out of district. And we get, you know, twenty to thirty kids, that's an extra three hundred thousand dollars of revenue coming into our district. And so then we can use that, those new enrollments to help us plan for additional staffing that we may need moving forward, so. That's what we're hopeful for.
And have we heard, um, any final decisions or, um, as far as enrollments? That we can use two years ago enrollment or last year's enrollment?
Yeah, so they're working on that too. I think that's, that's in both of the bills coming forward is that we're gonna be able to hold, you know, I mean, although there's one, holding our compensatory amounts the same. And then holding our um, enrollment either if it's greater this year, obviously we wouldn't be held to last year. But if ours is last year is greater, then we'd be able to use last year's data. So yes, there is movement in both of the, both of the bills coming forward from the House and the Senate for that, so.
And how is the budget currently projected? Is that using existing enrollment or previous?
Um, so it's using existing enrollment with a fifty percent add-on for the kids that left from, uh, for this year, so. Yep.
Any other questions? Amanda, do you need anything from us?
Uh, nope. At this point, like I said, I've just been really keeping in close contact with our finance committee of the board and working through this. So it was, I'll call another meeting. As soon as we know S R two and S R three, I'll be, I'll be looking to call another meeting with them. And then coming back to the full board to kind of put our recommendation together for how we use those funds. That'll be our next steps.
All right. With that.
Great. No, I don't have anything else at this point. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, tonight with Board Forum, normally I start on the edges and move around and I'll just start with Board Forum. I have nothing. Lori.
No, nothing further. We had the finance committee as Amanda mentioned, so.
Nothing from me. Danielle?
Um, not much. It's very nice going back to all four days in school. And I'm very, very grateful for that Wednesday in the middle because it's kind of just like a break and like a refresher to like be able to catch up on like a new schoolwork and just like a mental break. Um, but this coming weekend, I'm gonna be going to the state leadership convention for student council and national honor society. So it'll be fun to participate in those student workshops and just, I believe we might be, we might be presenting to the school board at one point, but I'm not one hundred percent sure yet. we might be presenting to the school board at one point, but I'm not one hundred percent sure yet.
Yeah, I think you will be at some point. You will be as a student school board representative. Exactly. Congratulations, Daniela, right?
It'll be nice. But yeah, that's it.
Deborah? Mr. Elstad, you've got a couple of things for us.
I do. I just want to keep the board informed. One of them is, uh, obviously the constant, uh, sort of evolution of COVID and what that looks like in our community. Um, as you can imagine, as you've followed the local media, we've seen an uptick in cases. And yes, Oatana has seen it as well, as well as our individual school district has seen an uptick in cases. Um, there's no reason to believe that the variant is not here as well, just like it has been in other communities. What I would share with you after doing a little bit of inquiry with our medical professionals is, in order for them to do the genomic sequencing it takes to figure out if, whether or not it's a variant, it takes five weeks to study that. And so by the time you know that there was variant present, more than likely you're five, six or longer into it. But like I said, we are seeing an uptick in cases. Um, you know, the other thing that I think is important to remember is that close contact investigation is still happening. Uh, the Department of Health has not let go of, uh, that and we need to move it forward. And I know that sometimes that causes a level of consternation with parents around, whoa, I just got back in school and now I have to be gone. Yes. And that's unfortunately, one of the pieces and detriments of having a pandemic around is that we never know when it's going to show up. And so, um, just a, another quick reminder is that, you know, the county numbers you're going to see are going to tick up again. Obviously, we've seen it go as low as in the teens. I think we saw that and that was really encouraging. Well, we're right back in that high forties to low fifties range in our county right now. But I would tell you that, uh, the Department of Health, uh, worked with us to move us further away from county numbers, really start to look at, um, the percentage of students and staff that might be out in a particular building. For years and years, we have been using a five percent rule and they call it I L I, which is an acronym for influenza-like, uh, illness. Well, now we're using C L I. So it's COVID-like illness. So again, what we measure not only are the number of students that are out in its entirety, including all of the students that are quarantined because of close contact, we're also measuring, how many active cases have we had when they were maybe active or they were infectious while at school? Because that has an impact on our numbers. But also not only have they tested positive, are they having symptoms of what COVID could be? And as I think if people have experienced COVID and their family are close, the symptoms really run the gamut. It can be anything from a runny nose to having really heavy duty, uh, dizziness and all sorts of things. I'm not going to go into all of the symptoms, but it, it runs the gamut. And so what we look at is what percentage of students and staff are impacted or are active cases or have influ, or COVID-like symptoms in the building. What I'm here to share with you, and even though contrary to some public belief, is that at our high school, which happens to be our largest building, where we're having seen the greatest number of students that are impacted more so by quarantine because of close contact, we're still under two percent. And in our high school, we need to have almost eighty cases of, of COVID-like illness present itself in order for us to at least start to investigate, should we take a different venue? Should we go to distance learning? Should we look at a hybrid model again? So again, um, we're monitoring that daily. Um, Amy Jo Havelka, who's not only our school nurse coordinator, but is also our COVID coordinator for the district, we do a daily update with Amy Jo to see where we're at and what buildings we need to be watching. And the last thing I would say is that, uh, now that, uh, you know, some vaccinations have become available for some of our students, I'm going to be communicating with parents where they can find information. They can sign kids up through a vaccine connector. So they can be alerted as to when a vaccine might be available. We're sort of limited in that any students that are eighteen and over can take any one of the three vaccines that have been approved by the FDA. But if you look at, um, the Pfizer vaccine, that's really the only one that's been approved for our sixteen and seventeen-year-old students. Nothing has been approved yet for any students in ages twelve to fifteen. I think they're close, but I don't think they've released any information on that yet. And again, what it, for those that are interested in getting a vaccine, um, you know, that certainly helps us get over that hump and move us further away. We have some really important events coming up at the end of the year. And we want to keep those intact for our students. And so we're continuing to ask our stu, our students and staff and community and parents all alike, continue to mask up, do our social distancing, do the things that we need to do in order to keep us uh, moving closer and closer to really ending a pandemic and moving beyond. So those are my quick updates. Uh, there'll be, like I mentioned, communication going out to parents, really just in reference to the criteria and the five percent and how that's shifting and what that means. And then really doing a transparent dive. So on our website every week, there'll be a weekly listing of, what's the weekly percentage of number of students that are out, uh, with COVID-like symptoms? And that means that again, whether they're positive or they just have the symptoms and haven't been tested or their test results are not available yet. So that's my quick COVID update. Legislatively, obviously, we're all waiting for what could happen here in the next, uh, month. Uh, because a little over a month and they're supposed to be, uh, kind of done with their work. I don't believe that will be the case. But what we have seen happening is both the Senate and the House have now moved their omnibus bills forward. There's still some, uh, work, uh, that's being doing to kind of continue to advance their bill in their respective, uh, legislative bodies. And so if we look at the House, uh, the budget target they set with their omnibus bill is seven hundred and seventy-one million dollars, uh, which is actually outpaces what the governor's original budget proposal for education was. And as you can well imagine, the Senate's proposal is a hundred and fifty-two million dollars. So we have about six hundred million dollars that's really separating now the difference between House and Senate proposals. Couple of things to keep our eyes on. Uh, Amanda mentioned the S R three funding that's coming. The Senate is really watching this number closely because they feel that if S R three funding is continuing to help us as a school system across the state to move forward, why would they invest any more in education? Because the federal government is kind of taking care of that. I would caution, uh, that thought because that is a one-time dollar source, one-time funding. One-time funding is horrible for us because it doesn't allow us to do any sustained budgeting moving forward. So again, those are the kind of things that are happening. The next steps here really will be, once they have gotten to a point where they want to bring it to the House floor and to the floor of the Senate, uh, they'll, they'll either approve or they'll go back and, um, edify it again to make sure that they, uh, have reached a conclusion. Once there's an agreement with the House and Senate, I'm certain they'll still be six hundred million dollars apart from one another. What that leads to then is sort of a crossover committee. So there'll be a joint committee that's formed, uh, five Senate members and five House members. They all come together. These are those meetings that go on all hours of the night with the committee to kind of bang out a deal. Because in the end, before they can, uh, part from their work, they have to set a budget, which is their biggest task this legislative session. So within that, those are kind of what we're seeing moving forward. Everything is so weird because everything's done virtually now. There's not a lot of, you know, you don't get to go to the Capitol and kind of talk to your people. You kind of do it virtually. I've had the chance now to provide testimonial, I think, on three or four different occasions. What that's led to basically is you pop in on a Zoom meeting for about fifteen minutes and they say, thanks so much, and you're on your way. So efficient, I hope it's effective. So I'll take any questions on legislative or COVID-related issues right now. Okay, thank you.
All right. Folks, anything else? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor with an eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good meeting tonight, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.